She has attended and directed the middle and high school concert and jazz bands, a high school musical, and a marching band. Christina graduated from Hilton back in 2006 and is honored to return here to teach and serve in the community and means so very much to her. I'm going off script for a second. She recently was awarded a Golden Apple. That actually aired on TV like an hour ago. Christina resides here in Hilton with her husband and her four children Noel, Levi, Isabella, and Sophia. Congratulations, Christina. Next up, we have Michael Champin. Mr. Champin has taught Algebra I and Intro to Statistics at Hilton High School for the past four years. Teaching is his second career for Mr. Champin as prior to education he worked in the restaurant business, most notably at Warbach's Brewery Company for 13 years. During his, what he described as his youthful mid-thirties, Michael returned to further his education, discovered his love for calculus, which encouraged him to teach math and be in that academic inspiring atmosphere that we have at the high school. While at the high school, Michael has participated in curriculum writing, our Saturday support school, and math league, and he resides in Trichville with his wife Kirsten. I don't know if I saw her, but next up is Ms. Brooke Chenapi. Is she here tonight? Okay. Brooke Chenapi has worked in Hilton since 2018. She started her first three years as a one-to-one aide at Village in her six-one-one classrooms, and then beginning in 2021, she moved to the high school where she has served as a teaching assistant in our resource rooms. That same year, her first child Luciano was a graduate of Hilton High School, and now she has a daughter Tassella, who also has graduated from Hilton, and an eighth grade daughter Magnolia, who goes to Merg Williams, and a sixth grade daughter Carmina at Village. She also works in our E S Y program, so congratulations to Brooke. Next up, Darlene Clark. Darlene began her career in education back in 2009, initially as a substitute teacher. Her dedication and passion for education quickly led her to a position as a teacher aide, where she played a vital role in supporting both students and teachers in the classroom. In 2021, she advanced to the position of teacher assistant at the high school. In that role, she's been able to engage more deeply with students, fostering their academic growth, and providing personalized support. Darlene finds immense joy working with students, and she eagerly anticipates each school day driven by her commitment to their success. Beyond her classroom responsibilities, Darlene has made significant contributions to the school's cultural and athletic programs. She's actively involved in the musical and play productions. She helps bring art to the lives of students with disabilities in the community. She also participates in our unified basketball program that promotes youth inclusion and teamwork among students of varying abilities. Her multi-faceted involvement highlights her dedication not only to education, but also to enriching overall student experience. Congratulations, Darlene. Next up is Rick Esposito. Mr. Esposito is a special education teaching assistant at the high school hired back in 2021. This is his second career after he retired from a long career in I T. He's brought his STEM experience to the special education department and is fulfilling a lifelong desire to give back and support students. Rick and his wife Mary have four children who are all grown and clothed. Next up is Callan Feeny. Mr. Feeny is in his fourth year as a science teacher at Hilton High School after working for five years as a laboratory technician at the University of Rochester. While Callan is working at U of R, he publishes scientific articles in various journals such as the Journal of Cell Chemical Biology. Callan uses his experience in the lab to model real-life laboratory experiences for our students. He is certified in both biology and chemistry, and he teaches Regent's Chemistry, Chemistry for the Community, and Regent's Biology. This year, he also began serving as a sources of strength advisor. He helps guide social media aspects of outsourcing strength. Callan also takes time out of each summer to write curriculum for biology and chemistry to prepare for the shift in the New York State Science Learning Standards, and recently moved to Greece with his wife Mary, his two sons Benson and Cormac, and their dog, Moka. Next up is Lydia Philhart. Ms. Philhart is in her fourth year as a teacher at Hilton High School, teaching a broad range of subjects in both Regent's Physics and Applied Physics support. She's also provided A I S science support, and her third-year teaching supports students in Earth Science, Biology, and Chemistry in addition to Physics. Lydia is certified in Physics and holds degrees in Physics and Math. She consistently seeks to refine both curriculum, and its delivery to best meet the needs of students will secretly challenge their thinking. She's pursued a variety of professional development opportunities in the past several years, and she's a strong advocate for her growth in professional practice. Lydia is devoted to building relationships with students, exploring their interests, and then tying those interests to the content. She founded a gaming club in her second year of teaching and has been running it every Wednesday since then with approximately 15 student members. She sought to ensure that students are active thinkers and self-motivated, engaging them in content through a variety of inquiry-based experiments and self-ification activities such as playlists. Lydia lives in Morechild with a childhood friend, two cats, a library full of books, and an abundance of house friends. Next up is Maggie Galis. Maggie is in her fourth-plus year as an English teacher at Hilton High School after completing her undergraduate degree at Robert Wessling University. Maggie started her career at Hilton High School as a long-term sub back in the spring of 2021 and has been growing ever since. While working at the high school, she earned a master's degree in literacy education and has taught a variety of English classes including English IX, English X, and I B Language and Literature XII. While at Hilton, Maggie has worked closely with her colleagues to adopt, implement, and effective standards-based grading system for English XII. She's dedicated her time to being advisor for the class in 2027, co-advisor of the newspaper club, personal project supervisor. She currently lives in Greece with her family, putting her black lab jam through Paul and Koda and her kitten Rigatoni. Next up is Logan Luke Trichowski. Mr. Luke Trichowski is in his fourth year of being a teacher assistant in our 11th and 12th grade eight-one-one classrooms at the high school. Along with his usual duties, Mr. Luke has also assisted with a variety of activities such as chef-broiling dances, tutoring, extended school year, and robotics. Additionally, Mr. Luke has been attending classes while at Hilton and will be certified to teach preschool through 12th grade special education this coming December. Mr. Luke found his love for teaching special education while being an aide in Greece before coming here to Hilton. He lives in Hamelin with his husband Sean, his one-year-old French Bulldog Archie, and his nine-year-old cat Guts. Mr. Luke is a proud cadet and is looking forward to a long career in the future. Next up, I didn't see her walk in. I don't know if she's here, but Ms. Alexis Norcross. She is here, okay. Ms. Norcross began her teaching career with the Hilton Central School District back in 2021, and has taught a variety of mathematics courses including Algebra II, Algebra Credit Recovery, College Prep, and Geometry A. Her experience with students of different math abilities has enhanced her teaching skills and lesson planning. Alexis actively collaborates with colleagues to improve instruction and support students beyond the classroom through her involvement in materials under gridiron, after-school supervision, and sharing students' iron and supporting events. We appreciate Alexis's contributions to our school community and we congratulate her. Next up, Alexa Wheelock. Ms. Wheelock is in her fourth year as a mathematics teacher at the high school. Prior to that, she filled a number of long-term substitute positions at Hilton High School as well as Merg Williams Middle School. She's taught several math courses including geometry, pre-calculus, and AP Statistics. Alexa works to promote a positive school community through her work as a student council advisor. She has worked to organize multiple school dances, pep assemblies, and other events for our students including fundraisers and donation products and projects, and she's also coordinated quarterly expression staff appreciation, which everybody loves. She's a graduate of Hilton High School herself, and she makes the priority to give back to the Hilton community. And one of those days she does that is through her service on the Hilton Education Foundation acting as their scholarship coordinator. Alexis lives in Brockport with her husband Matt.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Julie Ford-John, and she is our Director of Special Education.
I'd like to invite up Stacy Hotelling. Stacy is an exceptional special education teacher at Hilton High School who's demonstrated unwavering dedication, professionalism, and care throughout her four-year tenure. She consistently fosters an inclusive, supportive, and engaging learning environment that meets the needs, excuse me, that meets the diverse academic and social-emotional needs of her students. Stacy's commitment to instructional excellence is evident in her ability to design and implement individualized strategies that not only complement students' learning profiles, but also inspire them to take ownership of their group. Her classroom is a place where students feel safe to take risks, explore new ideas, and build confidence in their abilities. Stacy's professionalism, compassionate approach, and commitment to equity in education makes her an invaluable member of the Hilton High School team and outstanding candidate for tenure. Next, I'd like to invite up Emily Newmeyer. Emily is a dedicated and innovative special education teacher at Hilton High School who embodies a strengths-based mindset, consistently recognizing and nurturing the potential in her students and colleagues. Her dynamic instructional approach through programs like Teach, the U N C Literacy Project, and a student-run coffee shop engages students in meaningful, hands-on learning experiences. Emily fosters strong partnerships with families, enhancing student success both in school and the community. Known for her caring, honesty, and collaborative spirit, she builds effective relationships with a diverse team of service providers and professionals, contributing to positive academic and behavioral outcomes. Emily's impact and leadership make her an exceptional candidate for tenure and a valued asset to the community. Next, I'd like to invite up Kennedy Jokanis. Kennedy is a passionate and student-focused special education teacher at Quest Elementary who approaches her work with a strengths-based mindset, consistently recognizing the unique potential in her students and colleagues. Her creative and engaging instructional strategies create a positive, supportive classroom environment, and her strong communication with families helps build lasting partnerships that contribute to student success. Kennedy's thoughtful input during team meetings brings a clear, student-first perspective that enriches collaboration and decision-making. Respected for her kindness, fairness, and honesty, she's a dedicated advocate for students and a valued member of the school community. Her contributions make her an excellent candidate for tenure and is an essential asset to Quest Elementary. Next, I'd like to invite up Lance Trot. Lance is a highly collaborative and effective school psychologist at Quest Elementary whose leadership and communication skills have significantly enhanced student support systems. His facilitation of C S E and M T S S meetings promotes open dialogue amongst staff and families, and his ability to clearly convey assessment data helps guide my meaningful instructional and intervention decisions. Lance's approach, Lance approaches challenges with a systems-based mindset, playing a key role in the successful implementation of initiatives like zones of regulation and the use of anarima data. He is deeply responsive to the needs of both students and staff, demonstrated through his leadership of a vertical team focused on social and emotional wellbeing. Lance's proactive and supportive presence makes him an invaluable part of the school community and a strong candidate for senior. Next, I'd like to invite up Tatiana Cross. Tatiana is a dedicated and highly skilled speech-language pathologist who brings a student-centered approach and a wealth of experience to her role in the Hilton School District. Since joining the district during the pandemic, she's been instrumental in developing and delivering targeted intervention programs for young students experiencing speech and language delays. Her expertise in language development, technology, and data-driven practices, combined with her strong collaboration with teachers, has contributed significantly to student success. Tatiana has shown exceptional flexibility by supporting multiple elementary buildings and mentoring aspiring professionals. She has built meaningful relationships both within the district and the broader community, all in the service of supporting students and families. Tatiana is an invaluable asset to the district and strongly a legitimate candidate. Next, I'd like to invite up Danielle Marpet. Danielle has shown exceptional dedication during her probationary period, emerging as both a skilled speech pathologist and a leader within the Hilton Central School District. With deep knowledge of childhood language development, she understands the impact of her work on students' academic, social, emotional, and long-term success. Danielle is highly knowledgeable about regulations and resources, often integrating innovative communication systems for students with emerging language skills. She collaborates effectively with teams, actively engages in professional development, and consistently provides reliable support across the district. At both Northwood and Village Elementary, she demonstrates strong organization, effective use of M T S S strategies, and excellent case load management. Her strong relationships with colleagues and community specialists contribute to positive outcomes for students and families, making her a highly deserving candidate for tenure. Next, I'd like to invite up Tessa Miller. Tessa is a dedicated speech-language pathologist whose student-centered approach and expertise has been instrumental in addressing early language developmental delays that were caused by the pandemic. Since joining the Hilton Central School District, she's played a key role in developing and implementing targeted intervention programs for kindergarten and first-grade students, demonstrating strong collaboration with teachers, a deep knowledge of language development, and skillful use of technology and data. Tessa fosters meaningful connections with students, creating a positive and engaging learning environment where students feel empowered and supported. Her well-structured lessons cater to diverse learning styles, incorporate repeated practice, and are consistently aligned with student needs through careful planning and data analysis. Tessa's commitment to continuous improvement, responsiveness to feedback, and focus on student growth make her a valued member of the team and a strong candidate for tenure. Congratulations.
Last but not least, I'd like to introduce, hello? Who? All set? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, you're on the phone. I want to make sure we have everybody. All right. All right, very good. Awesome. I just filed the paper I was given. I'm sorry to put you on the phone. What's that?
We're good.
Okay, everybody's good? Cheers. All right. So just some closing words before we have everybody come up for a photo. Just once again, thank you to all of our colleagues who earned tenure this evening. Thank you for choosing Hilton. We're so happy it worked out. You make a difference each and every day for kids. Content is super important, but the relationships that you build with our children are the most important, especially today. So just want to thank you and thank your families for your commitment to being a cadet, and we're super happy to celebrate this special moment with you this evening. So what we'll do is we'll do a final round of applause, and then I would ask all of our tenure recipients to come up, and Mr. Dale is going to take a photo, and then we have some time for a reception. So congratulations.
All right, we're going to continue on with the meeting. Next up, we have district updates. Dr. Gesur.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'll keep these to a minimum, but congratulations to everyone who earned tenure this evening. We're proud to have them as a part of the cadet family. I hope everybody got a rest from the relaxing sprint break. During my visits to several of our buildings since we moved back, I've noticed both staff and students have hit the ground running. It's that sprint. We're not counting down, but I know there's a lot of hard work happening at the start of the fourth marking period. In response to recent public shootings, we will be conducting a tabletop drill with our administrative team on Wednesday. The drill will include participation from the Monroe County Sheriff's Department. So although we don't verbalize this frequently, we are constantly working on ensuring the safety of our students and our staff. And as we begin the fourth marking period, we wish all of our students and staff continued success as we head into the final stretch of the school year. Tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, so we thank all of our administrative professionals here in the district for all the work that they do. They truly are the glue that keeps the district together, and we appreciate them greatly. That's everything I have for you this evening.
All right. Next up, Ms. Pleeny.
So again, I echo congratulations to our fellows who received tenure, had the chance to observe all of them in the classroom, and were incredibly fortunate to have them here at Hilton and hoping to have students hopefully here this semester. Just one update from the Office of Instruction. Reminder, I know many of you are familiar with the fact that over the summer of 2024, Governor Kathy Hochul signed a new law, 3012P, which is what we used to know as 3012P, which was the A P D R Plan for Evaluation of Principals and Teachers, is now considered the STEPS Plan. That stands for Standards-Based Educator Evaluation and Professional Support. The update today is really just to let you know that the New York State Education Department has recently released guidance and some videos. There's also a webinar on Monday, but I know a number of us will be attending to learn more about the STEPS Plans. Districts have until June of 2032 to adopt a new STEPS Plan. We have not entered into negotiations nor started this at all. Just wanted to let you know that the state did release some really helpful documents, and you've been going through those over the last couple of days. We'll continue to do so as the A P D R Plan, STEPS Plan, can be negotiated and agreed upon with the unions involved and reviewed by New York State as more details become available, I'm sure.
What is this thing for? Excuse me? What does it stand for?
I'm sorry, I have to look down. It stands for, because it doesn't roll off the tongue. Standards-Based Educator Evaluation and Professional Support.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dale.
Well, Dr. Gesur took a bit of my thunder, but again, I wanted to just echo and just take a moment to think about how lucky we are to have the staff that we have tonight. I also think seeing the support of the families today, again, speaks volumes right now about how difficult it is at times to be in public education, and it does take the support of our families, and that's all I have to report to you on.
Mr. Geis.
No budget presentations tonight, but I do have a time. The budget vote is May 20th. We are actually now in the midst of creating the community budget presentation and all the documents that go along with that. So while there's no presentation tonight, we still are hard at work in the business office to get ready for the upcoming vote. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, we have approval of the minutes from the April 8th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th meeting. Christine, second. Nancy, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Board member reports. I will be attending the Monroe County School Board Association Board Leadership Meeting, Mr. Lawrence. That's all I got.
That's my report. Mr. Hilberger and I are working hard on revamping our handbook and looking forward to kind of having that additional student member on our school board and looking forward to what's to come.
We had our audit committee meeting this evening, and we listened to Ms. Verge explain to us about the external audit that's being conducted, and he went over some of the various items like audit of financial cycles, evaluating fraud risk, fund balances and reserves, and types of leaves. Those are some of the things that they look at in the external audit, which is conducted every year. Additionally, tomorrow I'm going to be going to the Monroe County School Board Association District Operations Committee. Campus Construction Management Group is coming, and they're going to be talking about capital projects and challenging targets. And that is all I have.
I have another part.
I'll just support what Christina said. So Audit Committee did not have a forum, so we couldn't approve of any of the items. We're working on, Adam, just working on scheduling another meeting for the Audit Committee so that we hit some important checkpoints or better get this to a end. I just wanted to note from our board reports from athletics that Special Olympics is coming up over at Sioux Rockport, which is going to be a fun event for our students along with other students on the west side. And then I wanted to know, in the transportation report, I just think it's really innovative the way they go about kind of testing each other on things to look out for in your inspections, and they're using the mechanics to do that, and that they have an employee of the year over there. The Transportation Department has a really great community, and you know, that translates to the bus drivers working with our students because they're the first ones they see when they get on the bus and come to our schools and really sets a nice tone.
Moving on to the consent portion of the meeting, we have the consent portion that's going to go all the way through M. It does have an addendum, and I would just also look to note that with the code of conduct, we have a slight duplicate of a line that will be deleted after the meeting. So we have a motion to first, we have a motion to approve the consent with the addendum portion. Nancy, you have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. That's going to bring us up to new business, which brings us back to the meeting we went to at Bosse's a couple weeks ago where they discussed the Bosse's budget and the Bosse's election. So I need a motion to approve the Moore Road Two Orleans Bosse's 2526 Annual Election and Budget Vote. Christine, a second. Nancy, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. All right, upcoming events, you can see there, coming into the spring, we got a lot, a lot happen. Coming into the spring, we got a lot, a lot happening in the spring as we head through to the end of the year. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I do want to note for the record that Hilton won at the Bozies to the annual meeting for most board members attending, and we were rightfully awarded.
I brought home some of those extra bars, and that just happened to be Mrs. Hilberger's favorite candy. I was a big winner when I got home. All right, anything else? Make a motion to adjourn. Nancy, a second? Ed, all in favor? Seven oh. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.